Everybody to come and to partake, participate in this. This is what local governance looks like. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and start with a roll call, please, Joan. Here.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long. Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Benali. Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. The first item here is the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments or changes we want to see? Or is there just a motion?
I would like to move the executive session to number two.
Okay, and then, and everything else the same?
Everything else the same.
Can you restate the motion then, please?
I'd like to make a motion where we move executive session following the approval of the agenda.
Okay, and the rest of it unchanged?
Rest of it unchanged.
Okay, anybody else second on that?
So just move from executive session to two and move everything down one?
Correct.
Okay, sir, I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
members of the audience and members online,
Mr. Shaw?
we will be watching the presentation
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the executive session,
for the Educational Products and Services Agreement discussion.
so I'll hear a motion to go into executive.
I would like to start this presentation with a quick overview.
Motion to enter executive session.
Okay, second down there?
Second.
And in this, I'd like to first start by stating
Second by Mr. Mitchell, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
the commitment that the board has continued to have towards our students.
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
You have worked hard on our strategic plan,
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
9:48.
on our strategic priorities,
All right, we're in executive session, we'll be back soon.
and given us metrics as to what you envisioned to see for the academic achievement as well as the programming for the Gallup McKinley County Schools. As part of this strategic plan, we have offered various academic opportunities and seen pretty significant achievement and student growth throughout these processes. And we want to continue those initiatives. Timelines and discussions will also be discussed, so there's going to be various timelines presented in relation to the data that I'm giving today. It will include some of the information from Stride themselves, and it will also include some of the information from the district. I'm going to present a brief overview of Stride Incorporated/K-12. I do want to say that when we first initiated this contract, it was K-12, they rebranded to Stride Incorporated. So you may hear me say those statements interchangeably, but I will try to stay consistent with Stride. I do also want to talk in this presentation about noncompliance with contract provisions, and I will go into detail on those individual items. I will say that this contract is not in the best interest of our students or our district. We do believe that online learning is a viable opportunity for our students. However, we need to be sure that we partner and get a vendor that has the same priorities as the board, which is student achievement. Also, we're going to look at noncompliance with the procurement code, and for that, I am going to request that our district's lead procurement director come up and discuss that as she is the district's chief procurement officer. A little bit on the program background. So we started looking at an online learning platform around 2019. We actually issued an RFP, and the board awarded in January of 2020 with the ideology of going into the 2020-2021 school year with an online program option. The reason that we did this is that we know that we serve a diverse group of students who face different challenges. And one of the challenges that we have, especially as we went into our initiative for college and career readiness, was how we were going to provide equitable opportunities for all students. And so we did look at this online platform in that lens. Now, the company that we went with was K-12, formerly K-12, currently Stride. This is a multi-billion dollar company that employs thousands of staff. They have resources and capacity that is very extensive. As you can see on the screen, their revenue is two point, over $2 billion, based upon the information that's publicly available. And so I want you to think about that, that the capacity they have and the access to resources that they have as we discuss the issues and concerns that we face. As I stated, this program was always intended as an alternative program. Now, the district offers many different alternative programs for our students, and this is one of the ones that we offer, which is the online learning opportunity. And we do believe, as I've stated, that a robust online learning opportunity is a viable learning opportunity that we should be providing to our students. When we contracted with K-12, now Stride, there was an agreement that they would be responsible for employing licensed, fully background-checked and vetted teachers to the program, and that they would monitor the academic performance. So there was a reporting requirement. If in two subsequent years there was a decline in academic performance, they would present to us a remedial plan that we would work on together in order to assure that the student services were being provided. It's also important, as I go through this data, to remember that the data provided, other than the state assessment data, which originates from the state assessment portal, is all provided to us by Stride staff. They provide reports directly to our student information system team. One of the things that I did in preparing for this was I actually looked to see in Google, I asked Google AI, as technology has advanced, there's amazing resources out there to give us information. And I asked Google AI, because this company is so large, and the issues that we're facing are so significant, I wondered how prevalent it was. And so this and the next slide actually has information directly from that Google search. But what you will notice is what is coming back on that Google search is exactly some of the struggles that we are facing. And that is challenges in student outcomes and academic performance, teacher quality and accountability, questions on business practices and financial incentives, ethical concerns, and legal issues. And as we go through this presentation, you will see that these issues and concerns, which are publicly available, are also the issues and concerns that we're now facing. There is a resources page at the end of the presentation, and you will note on that presentation that, on that slide, there's actually multiple court cases as well as currently open class action lawsuits. GMCS is a data-driven district. In July of 2024, we actually hired a district data analyst. The reason behind that hiring was because we had actually been working with Stride K-12 in building a data dashboard since 2022. We worked on that in 2022, 2023, and 2024. Unfortunately, that data dashboard never worked consistently. And so internally, we had the discussion in late 2023 that we needed to get additional support from within the district in analyzing and looking through data. We did bring on the district data analyst on July 1st in 2024. We also had some staff turnover during the 24-25 school year. And during the 24-25 school year, the district data analyst was placed in supervision of the student information team. That was in November of 2024, just prior to the 80th day student count. During the 80th day student count, we started noticing ongoing anomalies that staff had been reporting back and forth to the company. And so those concerns were brought forward to me as the district data analyst supervisor. Starting in January of 2025, we had meetings to discuss the student-to-teacher ratio with Stride staff. In those communications, which I will show you in just a moment, they acknowledged that there was an issue and that they would be actively working to fix those issues. Although we continued to see those issues and continued communicating, the issues actually continued to get much worse and more prevalent. Throughout the contract period, there has been communication throughout with GMCS staff and Stride staff about these various issues. So Stride was very aware of the concerns that were happening. One of the issues that we continued to face was Stride sending us student withdrawals substantially later than when the student actually withdrew from the program. This week, actually, two days ago, we received a withdrawal report with 46 names. One of the students that was withdrawn, the date of withdrawal was March 10th. That was almost two months ago. And so we are continuing to face these ongoing problems in reporting that Stride was well aware of. This ghost reporting continues to affect the accuracy of our data and our data submittals to the state. As I mentioned, the student-to-teacher ratios that emerged during the 80th day count in December continued to be exacerbated as we proceeded into 2025. We also took a deep dive in March into graduation rates. When we looked at those, and we will look at them again in a subsequent slide, you will see a dramatic decline in graduation rates for students in the program. And despite the two consecutive years of academic decline, there was no remedial plan proposed by Stride, as is in the agreement by December 31st of 2024. I am going to go through the data in these graphs. So this shows the student-to-teacher ratio concerns, and this comes out of New Mexico statute 2210A20. And this is in regards to the number of students that a teacher can either have per class, per day, or based upon the subject level that they're in.
Ms. Hanks, may I ask you a quick question before you go too much further? On that pass, on that last page you had there about this ghost reporting, what, I mean, besides making, making like data and stuff almost irrelevant because it's, it's all, it's screwed up because of this ghost reporting, what other, I mean, what else does this do? Like what, what's in it for Stride to have these kids on their rolls even though it seems like they withdrew, you know, months earlier?
President Mortensen, members of the board, members of the audience and members online, we will be watching the presentation for the Educational Products and Services Agreement discussion. I would like to start this presentation with a quick overview. And in this, I'd like to first start by stating the commitment that the board has continued to have towards our students. You have worked hard on our strategic plan, on our strategic priorities, and given us metrics as to what you envisioned to see for the academic achievement as well as the programming for the Gallup McKinley County Schools. As part of this strategic plan, we have offered various academic opportunities and seen pretty significant achievement and student growth throughout these processes. And we want to continue those initiatives. Timelines and discussions will also be discussed, so there's going to be various timelines presented in relation to the data that I'm giving today. It will include some of the information from Stride themselves, and it will also include some of the information from the district. I'm going to present a brief overview of Stride Incorporated/K-12. I do want to say that when we first initiated this contract, it was K-12, they rebranded to Stride Incorporated. So you may hear me say those statements interchangeably, but I will try to stay consistent with Stride. I do also want to talk in this presentation about noncompliance with contract provisions, and I will go into detail on those individual items. I will say that this contract is not in the best interest of our students or our district. We do believe that online learning is a viable opportunity for our students. However, we need to be sure that we partner and get a vendor that has the same priorities as the board, which is student achievement. Also, we're going to look at noncompliance with the procurement code, and for that, I am going to request that our district's lead procurement director come up and discuss that as she is the district's chief procurement officer. A little bit on the program background. So we started looking at an online learning platform around 2019. We actually issued an RFP, and the board awarded in January of 2020 with the ideology of going into the 2020-2021 school year with an online program option. The reason that we did this is that we know that we serve a diverse group of students who face different challenges. And one of the challenges that we have, especially as we went into our initiative for college and career readiness, was how we were going to provide equitable opportunities for all students. And so we did look at this online platform in that lens. Now, the company that we went with was K-12, formerly K-12, currently Stride. This is a multi-billion dollar company that employs thousands of staff. They have resources and capacity that is very extensive. As you can see on the screen, their revenue is two point, over $2 billion, based upon the information that's publicly available. And so I want you to think about that, that the capacity they have and the access to resources that they have as we discuss the issues and concerns that we face. As I stated, this program was always intended as an alternative program. Now, the district offers many different alternative programs for our students, and this is one of the ones that we offer, which is the online learning opportunity. And we do believe, as I've stated, that a robust online learning opportunity is a viable learning opportunity that we should be providing to our students. When we contracted with K-12, now Stride, there was an agreement that they would be responsible for employing licensed, fully background-checked and vetted teachers to the program, and that they would monitor the academic performance. So there was a reporting requirement. If in two subsequent years there was a decline in academic performance, they would present to us a remedial plan that we would work on together in order to assure that the student services were being provided. It's also important, as I go through this data, to remember that the data provided, other than the state assessment data, which originates from the state assessment portal, is all provided to us by Stride staff. They provide reports directly to our student information system team. One of the things that I did in preparing for this was I actually looked to see in Google, I asked Google AI, as technology has advanced, there's amazing resources out there to give us information. And I asked Google AI, because this company is so large, and the issues that we're facing are so significant, I wondered how prevalent it was. And so this and the next slide actually has information directly from that Google search. But what you will notice is what is coming back on that Google search is exactly some of the struggles that we are facing. And that is challenges in student outcomes and academic performance, teacher quality and accountability, questions on business practices and financial incentives, ethical concerns, and legal issues. And as we go through this presentation, you will see that these issues and concerns, which are publicly available, are also the issues and concerns that we're now facing. There is a resources page at the end of the presentation, and you will note on that presentation that, on that slide, there's actually multiple court cases as well as currently open class action lawsuits. GMCS is a data-driven district. In July of 2024, we actually hired a district data analyst. The reason behind that hiring was because we had actually been working with Stride K-12 in building a data dashboard since 2022. We worked on that in 2022, 2023, and 2024. Unfortunately, that data dashboard never worked consistently. And so internally, we had the discussion in late 2023 that we needed to get additional support from within the district in analyzing and looking through data. We did bring on the district data analyst on July 1st in 2024. We also had some staff turnover during the 24-25 school year. And during the 24-25 school year, the district data analyst was placed in supervision of the student information team. That was in November of 2024, just prior to the 80th day student count. During the 80th day student count, we started noticing ongoing anomalies that staff had been reporting back and forth to the company. And so those concerns were brought forward to me as the district data analyst supervisor. Starting in January of 2025, we had meetings to discuss the student-to-teacher ratio with Stride staff. In those communications, which I will show you in just a moment, they acknowledged that there was an issue and that they would be actively working to fix those issues. Although we continued to see those issues and continued communicating, the issues actually continued to get much worse and more prevalent. Throughout the contract period, there has been communication throughout with GMCS staff and Stride staff about these various issues. So Stride was very aware of the concerns that were happening. One of the issues that we continued to face was Stride sending us student withdrawals substantially later than when the student actually withdrew from the program. This week, actually, two days ago, we received a withdrawal report with 46 names. One of the students that was withdrawn, the date of withdrawal was March 10th. That was almost two months ago. And so we are continuing to face these ongoing problems in reporting that Stride was well aware of. This ghost reporting continues to affect the accuracy of our data and our data submissions to the state. As I mentioned, the student-to-teacher ratios that emerged during the 80th day count in December continued to be exacerbated as we proceeded into 2025. We also took a deep dive in March into graduation rates. When we looked at those, and we will look at them again in a subsequent slide, you will see a dramatic decline in graduation rates for students in the program. And despite the two consecutive years of academic decline, there was no remedial plan proposed by Stride, as is in the agreement by December 31st of 2024. I am going to go through the data in these graphs. So this shows the student-to-teacher ratio concerns, and this comes out of New Mexico statute 2210A20. And this is in regards to the number of students that a teacher can either have per class, per day, or based upon the subject level that they're in.
Ms. Hanks, may I ask you a quick question before you go too much further? On that pass, on that last page you had there about this ghost reporting, what, I mean, besides making, making like data and stuff almost irrelevant because it's, it's all, it's screwed up because of this ghost reporting, what other, I mean, what else does this do? Like what, what's in it for Stride to have these kids on their rolls even though it seems like they withdrew, you know, months earlier?
President Mortensen, members of the board, the concerns that we have with ghost students is inaccuracy in data reporting. It is also a financial incentive to have additional students in the program as that is the mechanism for funding for the contract.
How much per student?
It varies because it is based upon demographics, but it could be anywhere from 9,000 to 11,000 per student.
So they have a financial, I mean, a financial interest in inflating these numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that question. I wanted also to add on. I was, I received a phone call about three weeks ago indicating that I had a niece that was dropped from the program, and she's a senior this year, which she didn't even know she was dropped. And when the counselors attempted to call Stride, Stride didn't even know she was dropped. So, you know, the confusion there, especially the damages, educational damage that could happen to a senior at that level. This is, again, from my own family.
She was, she was dropped and they don't know why? And it's her senior year?
Yes, in March, and graduation's in May. So I know that, that's a clear indication that that's happening because it actually happened.
And so, internally, we had the discussion in late 2023 that we needed to get additional support from within the district in analyzing and looking through data. We did bring on the district data analyst on July 1st in 2024. We also had some staff turnover during the 24-25 school year. And during the 24-25 school year, the district data analyst was placed in supervision of the student information team. That was in November of 2024, just prior to the 80th day student count. During the 80th day student count, we started noticing ongoing anomalies that staff had been reporting back and forth to the company. And so, those concerns were brought forward to me as the district data analyst supervisor. Starting in January of 2025, we had meetings to discuss the student-to-teacher ratio with Stride staff. In those communications, which I will show you in just a moment, they acknowledged that there was an issue and that they would be actively working to fix those issues. Although we continue to see those issues and continue communicating, the issues actually continued to get much worse and more prevalent. Throughout the contract period, there has been communication throughout with GMCS staff and Stride staff about these various issues. So, Stride was very aware of the concerns that were happening. One of the issues that we continued to face was Stride sending us student withdrawals substantially later than when the student actually withdrew from the program. This week, actually, two days ago, we received a withdrawal report with 46 names. One of the students that was withdrawn, the date of withdrawal was March 10th. That was almost two months ago. And so, we are continuing to face these ongoing problems in reporting that Stride was well aware of. This ghost reporting continues to affect the accuracy of our data and our data submittals to the state. As I mentioned, the student-to-teacher ratios that emerged during the 80th day count in December continued to be exacerbated as we proceeded into 2025. We also took a deep dive in March into graduation rates. When we looked at those, and we will look at them again in a subsequent slide, you will see a dramatic decline in graduation rates for students in the program. And despite the two consecutive years of academic decline, there was no remedial plan proposed by Stride, as is in the agreement by December 31st of 2024. I am going to go through the data in these graphs. So, this shows the student-to-teacher ratio concerns, and this comes out of New Mexico statute 2210A20. And this is in regards to the number of students that a teacher can either have per class, per day, or based upon the subject level that they're in.
Ms. Hanks, may I ask you a quick question before you go too much further? On that pass, on that last page you had there about this ghost reporting, what, I mean, besides making, making like data and stuff almost irrelevant because it's, it's all, it's screwed up because of this ghost reporting, what other, I mean, what else does this do? Like, what, what's in it for Stride to have these kids on their roles even though it seems like they withdrew, you know, months earlier?
President Mortensen, members of the board, the concerns that we have with ghost students is inaccuracy in data reporting. It is also a financial incentive to have additional students in the program, as that is the mechanism for funding for the contract.
How much per student?
It, it varies because it is based upon demographics, but it could be anywhere from 9,000 to 11,000 per student.
So, they have a financial, I mean, a financial interest in inflating these numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that question. I wanted also to add on. I was, I received a phone call about three weeks ago indicating that I had a niece that was dropped from the program. And she's a senior this year, which she didn't even know she was dropped. And when the counselors attempted to call Stride, Stride didn't even know she was dropped. So, you know, the confusion there, especially the damages, educational damage that could happen to a senior at that level. This is, again, from my, my own family.
She was, she was dropped and they don't know why? And it's her senior year?
Yes, in March, and graduations in May. So, I, I, I know that, that's a clear indication that that's happening because it actually happened.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Hanks.
President Mortensen, I will be looking at the student-to-teacher ratio graph. And so, in January 2024, there were direct written communications with the executive director regarding the student-to-teacher ratios. We did have verbal conversations and meetings as well. I have listed the written communications, which we have specific documentation for. We did not receive an answer, so a subsequent email was sent on January 29th. And then, a subsequent email to that was sent by me to both the executive director and the vice president of portfolios. On February 3rd, we actually met with the executive director at Stride and discussed these issues and concerns. He, during that meeting, knew the issues that we were talking about and the statute that we were referencing. And we actually provided him a spreadsheet of our concerns. They looked at that spreadsheet, they actually highlighted areas of noncompliance, which was stated in the written body of the email, and told us that they were hiring and that they were very much working to resolve this issue. As you can see from the chart, that, that didn't resolve. It actually grew pretty substantially from the time that we started talking in January to the date that the April 1st letter was actually issued.
So, this is, this, I mean, at the very end there where we have it, April 1st, that's 117 kids per student on average, is what that is?
President Mortensen, no, that's actually 117 individual violations of the statute. Meaning, that's impacting many students in those classrooms. Some of those teachers that were listed had more than two times the number of students they should have had registered in their class.
How, how many is that, you think? How many kids are we talking about? When you say two times, what is that? How many kids is that?
So, over 300.
So, like a Zoom class with 300 people on it and one teacher?
That were listed to that teacher.
Great.
Ms. Hanks, before, and many times in, in previous, being a board member, we always get complaints about parents on the in-person classes that say, "Our teacher is struggling, why are you giving, you know, this teacher 25 students in a classroom?" That's difficult enough, and we have state regulations that cap those kind. I, I mean, I, I know they're different age, grade levels and different numbers, ratios. You know, and, and now looking at this online with over 300 students to one teacher, is that legal? Is that?
So, President Mortensen, Member Benali, it is in violation of the statute. Now, there are parameters that allow us to submit information to PED, and that typically in, in the statute spells out those, those waiver concerns. But the waiver concerns that are spelled out in statute are not necessarily applicable to this circumstance. And as we discuss further, you will see that they had the capacity and the ability to hire additional staff. Again, this is, this is a vast corporation, this is a huge corporation. They had more than the capacity to leverage these resources.
Was there any dispute from Stride about this, you know, that some of these classrooms with over 300 kids in a class?
President Mortensen, at this time, no. There were disputes later in regards to the data, but remembering that all the data that we get is actually received from Stride directly to our Student Information System.
So, Stride's information told us that these classes were too big, like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
One question, Ms. Hanks. Isn't it true that they only tried to, even the student-teacher ratio this last month, hire 50 new teachers just this last month? So, the, for the rest of the school year, they were in violation, and the students were harmed in a way because they, they weren't having the student-teacher ratio until this last month.
President Mortensen, Secretary Schaff, that, that is a concern. And if, if I may, I'm going to defer to later in the presentation where I can go into a little bit more detail on that specific question, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So, they also had student-to-counselor ratios, which far exceeded the recommendations from the American School Counselor Association. Now, the, New Mexico does not have a statute or a hard and fast rule on this, but we know that counselors play an important role in ensuring that students are on track, that students are in the appropriate classes, that that's, those students are receiving next step plans in 8th through 12th grade to ensure that they're ready to graduate on time. And as by the concerns offered by Member Benali, speak directly to concerns of students getting dropped from the program or other incidents happening, counselors play a key role in this. And so, we felt this was important to share with you as an overall part of the presentation and part of the data. Now, you may ask, what may have been a reason for the delay in staffing? And so, when we looked at the number of staff that they had put forward, which has grown, continued to grow, so if we said the 46 initial teacher applicants that they had put forward to us, and approximately 13 counselors to bring them in with the guidelines from the National American Associate, American School Counselor Association, I mean, that's really a savings of about $3.5 million, just there, just looking at that narrow focus. And so, when you, when I'm asked, you know, what could, what could even be the benefit of this? Really, it could be a financial benefit for the company in, in not hiring those staff. So, I would like to go into a little bit of the data. Some of the data is presented here in the boardroom in larger scale for anyone. And specifically talking about proficiency rates. So, these are related to state testing assessments. We did give Stride staff access to state testing information in 2021. The reason it was given in 2021 is, as many of us know, during the COVID pandemic in the year 2020 to 2021, state testing assessments were not completed due to the, you know, just the pandemic and all of the issues and concerns that were brought forward during that time. And so, looking at these metrics over the three years of data that we have, you've got the state, you've got the blue line, which is GMCS, and then you've got the red line, and this is specifically math proficiency rates. And so, as you can see, in 23-24, only 5.6% of the students that tested were proficient in math. And that's in comparison to 18% at the district level and 23.1% at the, at the state level. When we initiated this contract, we knew academics had to be a core function of the contract because that is the whole purpose of the program, that's the whole purpose of every program that we offer. And so, a portion of the contract actually stated that if in two subsequent years there was a decline in state metrics that were identifiable and comparable with peers, then a remedial plan would be submitted for the district to review. That should have been due to the district in December of 2024, and we did not receive it.
Did we ask for that?
We did not ask for it. We, excuse me, President Mortensen.
No, no problem.
We did not ask for it, and we were in the process of having those discussions back and forth about the data with the staff here at, at GMCS.
We were still sussing out some of that stuff, is what you're saying?
Okay. But, given the capacity of the corporation, given the sophistication, the size, the monetary revenue, how did they not know? How, how did they not know? And they had access, they had access since 2021. And our staff was more than happy to talk to them at any time that they had questions, and there are copious communications in regards to it. Unfortunately, reading echoes the same circumstance. As you can see, in 21-22, we were on par with each other. In 22-23, there was a slight decline, and, and you can see them pulling away. In 23-24, it was, it was significant. And we do not have 24-25 data yet, but I do fear, given what we know now, that red line may go down further. And science. Science, they were actually more proficient in the, in the program in 21-22. And then, there was a sharp decline between 21-22 and 22-23. And then, just a small increase in 23-24, but still significantly below the district and the state. And so, these are the cornerstone of our concerns in relation to academic achievement.
Is there any correlation between, you know, that we can see with the data, between class sizes and proficiency rates?
President Mortensen, members of the board, we have asked Stride for an extensive amount of data so that our district data analyst could have all information related to students, because we had multiple questions. Not only for the data that we had, but data that we did not yet have, and we did ask for that. We have not been provided that data. So, initially, Stride told us that they would provide us that data and actually told us that it was going to be about 18 terabytes worth of data, which is a lot of data. We set up a secure transfer site for that data to be given to the district, and to date, it has not been provided. So, they let us know in the last week of April, the size of the data that they were going to send to us, so it was a known quantity. We set up the site and had it available to them May 1st. They confirmed receipt of that information May 1st through their attorney. And they have never provided us any of the data to date. So, I have nothing to share with you on that yet.
Yeah.
But please know that that is an ongoing concern and something that we will continue to look at.
I mean, so far, this seems like it just paints a picture of a poor-performing, a low-performing contractor, you know, kind of thing, like a contractor of the school district, someone that we have a contract with. And, and, and really, I mean, is there anything, they've provided any rebut or anything to anything like that at all?
So, President Mortensen, I know that they have denied some of the allegations, but they have not provided any data to disprove them.
Yeah, I mean, these scores and numbers are in the toilet.
And, and this is state assessment data, President Mortensen, it is directly from the state system.
Yeah, we're not making, I mean, we're not making this up, these, these scores are in the toilet, and so.
And as I mentioned, they had access to the same system in 2021 that we have access to.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
You know, there, there's a regulation that we have with the state of New Mexico of the student-teacher ratio for a reason. And I think, seeing the numbers of one teacher per 300, 350 students, of course, this is what's going to happen. Where is the one-to-one, the very involved teacher that will, you know, make sure that the student is not doing well and intervene on behalf of that student? If you have 300, 350 students, you don't even have the time to do that. So, our education system for that child, this, this is going to be the result. It's disheartening that, you know, in each subject, there's a decline. And I have more comments, but I, I also want to continue to see the presentation. Thank you.
I mean, you're totally right about that. I mean, I, I've, I've got two kids currently in the district, and I, when they graduate, I, I will have had four kids in the district, and, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, anyways, I wouldn't put up with this garbage in any class. Go ahead, continue, please.
President Mortensen, members of the board, one of the metrics we've looked at as well is their daily attendance rates. And I don't think you or any member in the audience would, would deny that a student's attendance directly affects their academic ability. And the reason that I say that is because when students attend school, they get the full benefit of the program and that licensed teacher that's in the classroom providing them that academic support. And so, what we see over time, far below the district on each official count day of the year, but it actually declined to just below 65% by the 120th day, which was in February. And so, it, it was below the district, it got slightly better, and then it got significantly worse. And so, this is another area of concern that we have in regards to this vendor and the performance.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
With, with the attendance and, and seeing that, you know, the decrease on the 120th day, do we have any data showing, I know for Gallaudet-McKinnon County, if you miss 10 days or more, you know, there is some type of intercourse that's, that's done. So, with these absentees that are showing, do we have data showing whether these students are missing more than 10 days or, and if there's intervention being done?
President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, part of the challenge that we've had is the lack of accurate data. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, two days ago, we got 46 names of students who were withdrawn from the program, one dating as early back as March 10th. And so, based upon the data that we're getting, it's very difficult. And, and I will say that we have, again, asked for a substantial amount of data confirmation from Stride, and that has not been provided. And, and it was available, we had the secure site available May 1st to provide us that data. They sent the request and the size that we need to provide, and our technology company, our technology staff immediately stepped in and set up that connection.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any other questions, Mr. Mitchell? Okay.
On this slide, this is one of the state assessments. So, there is a federal requirement under the Every Student Succeeds Act that students are tested to a 95% of population. And Stride has consistently been below the 95% testing rate. And this is one, this is the SAT of the five state mandated assessments, and all of them look very close to this, where they are not meeting. They have met in three years, one time, the 95% participation rate, that was this year in the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment. But that was the only one that they've met in the past three years. Having the eligible student should be taking the state assessment, actually take the state assessment. And as we know, state assessments are a methodology for students to really show what they've learned. Students are able to really demonstrate the learning that they've attained during their academic career for those specific ideas. And one of the things that concerns us here is that when you utilize testing, you are actually gathering information on a student. So, if a student is struggling in an area, a test will actually tell you, "Hey, we need to get together and create a remediation plan for this student to help them get back on grade level" so that they can be proficient and they can perform. But when you don't have students take that test, you don't get that information. And so, you are not able to create that remedial plan and really step in and provide those interventions to the students. So, it is required by federal law, but it is very important to the education of students for us to know what areas we may need to go back and support.
I have a quick question for those things, and, and you, you may not know the answer to this question, and which is fine, but like, when those state testing, when the state tests are going on, like in my house, I know about it because my kid's bellyache about going to school, and all we're going to do is test, you know, at school or whatever, and, and they don't ever want to go. But, you know, it's like, it's like multiple days of testing and, and, and stuff like that. How does that look for, for Stride typically? Is it the same kind of thing, you know, multiple days of testing, and that's basically all they do?
President Mortensen, there is a window that says state, and within that window, you have an opportunity to test. So, yes, they, they do have that opportunity to design when their students will go in for testing and, and prepare them in advance for those timelines.
And so, if they're, I mean, if, if, if they're not testing all these kids, I mean, this basically like it relates potentially to attendance rates, if the kids aren't there, that's why they're not testing, which relates to these, this, these, these ghost, ghost kids also, if they don't even exist, that's why they're not at school, and that's why they're not testing. And so, it, you can, yeah, you can certainly see how all these, all these metrics are related.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am.
In a typical school setting, you know, if we see a student that is having issues in school, there's a counselor that pulls them or reviews their academic progress or even their attendance. Going back to one of your previous slides on the counselor ratio, if, if I'm looking at this right, it says there is 3,000, or 1,1, I'm sorry, 1,342 students to one counselor?
So, if you're looking at the April 1st date, which I believe you are, Member Benali?
Yes.
Yes, essentially, based upon the number of students enrolled, which was over 4,000 at that time. There were, according to the data that we have from Stride, three counselors.
I guess, so my, so that's letting us know. I guess, so my, so that's letting us know there's so many kids that are falling through the cracks, that are not getting the assistance they need in academics or attendance because they, I don't see how they can do that with one thousand three hundred and forty-two students that they each have. Thank you.
President Mortensen, members of the board, the last data point that I'd like to present during this part of the presentation is in relation to four-year graduation rates. And so four years is the on-graduation with your cohort. Now, we do know that some students take more years to graduate. This is specifically looking at four-year graduation rate, which is students graduating in their cohort with their peers. As you will notice, GMCS at the blue line is above the state, but when you look at the red line, there has been a sharp decline between the 2023 and 2024 graduation rates. And given everything that I'm presenting to you today, I'm not very hopeful that 2025 is going to go up substantially. Again, this is based upon data that is provided through Stride to us about students who are graduating, where they were in their academic career, and they consistently lag behind the district and the state. And that's not anything we want for any of our students. That is not anything, our goal is to ensure that every student gets a robust education so that they can leave us as part of their life's journey, well-prepared, well-prepared to go into college career civic readiness. That's the cornerstone of our strategic plan. That is our ultimate goal, that students leave Gallup McKinley County schools in our district ready and prepared, ready to compete globally, ready to compete locally, and ready to be successful.
Mr. Mortensen, you know, we are very fortunate in some of our homes that we have parents that are actively involved in our children's education and will be there, even if they're online students, to be there and push them and tell them, okay, you got to do this, don't forget, we have to, you know, school's going to start, whatever it may be. The parents are involved. There is a larger percentage, as we can see, that they're not. And I think that's where we, the letters that were received, you know, you can see the parents are involved, and we're thankful for that. We're thankful that they are there pushing their students. But what about the ones that don't have a voice for them today and the results that we are getting? You know, we need to continue to think of those students that the parents are not involved. Maybe they're working parents, you know, grandma, grandpa. In our area, there's a lot of our native parents that work in Albuquerque, Phoenix Flagstaff and are not there for their kids, but their grandparents are. So that, I just wanted to mention that. I'm thankful for the parents that are involved, but these graduation rates that we're seeing here is worrisome as well.
President Mortensen, Member Benali, counselors play a huge role in helping students understand where they are on their path to graduation. They are the push-in support, that connection to families that really connects students and parents and the program to ensure that everybody is aware of where that student is on their path to graduation. And it kind of exemplifies the things that we've gone through and the concerns that we're bringing forward, is that this company should have known, based upon all the data that they more than have access to, that this was the reality that was happening. One of the things I'd also like to discuss, as we looked at twenty-three, twenty-four, based upon current information at the time, again, we just got a new update two days ago, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three students who entered the program exited the program and never came back. You can add forty-six to that based upon this week's email. That's almost a thirty percent turnover rate in students entering and exiting the program. It is very difficult to ensure that students' learning is continuous. You know that that's one of the reasons that the district strategically aligned our curriculum mapping to ensure that if students moved around in the district, no matter which school they went to, they would be on the same standard at the same time.
Right.
As you mentioned, our students face challenges in McKinley County, they do. We have the highest poverty rate in the state of New Mexico. We are very bad geographically, meaning we're very rural. We don't have access to a lot of the urban type amenities that other larger districts do, like libraries in every one of our communities, things of that nature. So it is disheartening to see this number of students who came into the program and exited the program during the school year. And this number may grow based upon information that we receive from the company. As I said, they just sent us information about a student who left in March.
Just to put this, Ms. Hanks, just to put this in context, seventeen hundred students, I mean, like, how many, how many kids do we have at, I don't know, maybe, I'm sorry, this is like a, not meant to be a gotcha question, I mean, how many kids do we have at, like, Red Rock Elementary?
President Mortensen, that is a gotcha question, because I cannot quote that off the top of my head.
I was just curious, like, what this, what this comes down to, like, is this equal to, like, a middle school or a high school's worth of kids just gone?
It's equal to Miyamura, gone.
Gone. Okay, so like a five-A high school, just like, worth of kids just disappearing, and we're not sure where they went, and nobody can tell us? The contractor who's supposed to be able to tell us, they're like, we don't know.
Did we, excuse me, Mr. Mortensen, did we even get notified that these students, where they, first of all, that they were dropped in which, if they're in a different school district, or are they, you know, did they go back to in-person? Is there some, any kind of notification that we received from them, from Stride?
Sure. President Mortensen, Member Benali, they are supposed to be reporting that withdrawal data, and in that withdrawal data, they should tell us the withdrawal code and the various codes that are assigned by the state of New Mexico, which tells us why they withdrew and where they went, whether they went to a school district, a BIE school, a charter school, a private school, or exited the state. And that all rolls into the data. Part of the continuous issue that we're having, that is still ongoing and is still very prevalent, is that the data that we're getting is not accurate or timely. So some of these students, they will tell us months later, never enrolled in the program. They will send the enrollment, they will state that they started in the program, and then two months later, they will tell us, never started the program.
Have they collected any money in that time?
There is a distinct possibility, given the reporting dates, that the payment is based upon the average of the eightieth and one-twentieth day reporting, yes. And that is part of the question costs that we have, given these reporting issues that we are continuing to see that continue to get worse.
Thank you. Questions, anybody else? Go ahead.
Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, I would like to bring up our lead director over procurement, she is the district's procurement officer, to talk through some of the procurement concerns that we have.
President Mortensen, members of the board, members of the audience and those online, as was introduced, I am Catherine Chrysler, the chief procurement officer, and therefore the statutory authority, the legal authority for making determinations and approving procurement in accordance with the procurement code. The state of New Mexico is subject to Chapter thirteen of the New Mexico Annotated Statutes. And I don't want to get too deep into the legal language and bore everyone with those kinds of, that language, but essentially, I'm here to answer to some of the allegations that were made by Stride in regards to whether the district violated, or any members, you know, the staff of the district violated provisions in the procurement code. So they alleged in an article that was published in a newspaper that they, you know, and again, it was kind of a vague statement, that the district may have violated the procurement code. It appears that they were referring to thirteen-one-one-ninety-three, which forbids being employed with both the district and a contractor at the same time, without there also being a waiver granted by the board in accordance with Section thirteen-one-one-ninety-four. At this time, procurement has absolutely no evidence that there is a GMCS employee working for both Stride and for the district, therefore, we are not in violation of that particular section.
Has that ever been the case? Have we ever had a GMCS employee working for Stride?
Have we ever had?
Like, at the same time?
At the same time? I am not aware of that, but that is something that we actually, I did ask the personnel if there was anything that they could find, and on whether or not maybe we did have some staff who were working for Stride, again, at the same time. Now, I am going to talk about, in a future slide, President Mortensen, about something that did come to light based on the complaint made by Stride. But first, I wanted to talk about, one of the other complaints that they made referenced a potential violation of the exclusivity contract clause, and that this would restrict the district from entering into a contract with other companies to provide the same services. Now, this clause violates the procurement code in accordance with Section thirteen-one-twenty-nine C by attempting to eliminate competition, limiting the purchasing value of public funds, and by revising and expanding the scope of services that were published in the original request for proposals that they responded to, and that is specifically thirteen-one-one-twelve. The clause in the contract, that in the very same contract that they refer to, cannot limit the board's rights, your rights, your, to actually look out for the needs of the district. So that's one other issue that they need to be aware of, and therefore, that provision relied upon by Stride is illegal as a matter of law.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This part that the board's right, you know, we have continuously fought different entities to keep our local control as a board here, and this has been consistent statewide. We sit on the New Mexico School Board Association Board of Directors, Mr. Mitchell and myself, and this is something that we continue to advocate for. We know our children best here, and we, it is different, even though we're still in the state of New Mexico, we know how our rural areas in Gallup is different than our colleagues in APS, then in Las Cruces or in Las Vegas. And this is a part that we continue to fight for and advocate for, and I don't think at this point, Stride knows, nobody from Stride has ever come to sit on a bus and say, "Gee, to see what our children have to go through." They have never come to see the internet issues our students may have. And how can they come and tell us now that we have to do this? And, yeah, they may be a two-billion-dollar entity, but we know our children, we know what our children, we go to chapter meetings, we go to all the meetings that we did to hear the concerns from our community. So we're going to continue to uphold what our rights are as a board because we do know our children.
Thank you, ma'am.
Member Benali, thank you very much, and yes, you've made the exact point, is that that exclusivity clause does not remove your rights to be able, nor, as I said, is it, it's not even based on the procurement code. Now, there was another allegation that they made with a violation of the New Mexico Governmental Conduct Act. And I just wanted to clarify that there is no existing evidence of an actual financial benefit received or a conflict of interest established between Stride and the superintendent. The superintendent was not and is not a party in the decision to the contract with any provider. It even states so in the contract documents, in the RFP documents, that the individual, that the entity that is party to the contract is the board. In fact, however, in their complaint, it was discovered they hired a former district assistant superintendent as their director of school operations immediately upon his separation with the district. Now, this, this former employee's job duties included supervision of services that were performed by Stride. Therefore, the district is required to terminate the contract in order to comply with Section ten sixteen-eight-C-one of the Governmental Conduct Act. At this point, I mean, my, these are my understanding and my right of the law, of the actual statutes, and the party that has violated at this time would be the district if we did not terminate because of the conflict of interest created when they hired our, a former employee. This is also a violation of the contract clause number twenty-one in the executed services agreement. So ultimately, I mean, based over the concerns of the legality of the existing contract and the company's performance, publishing a competitive request for proposals in order to source a new contractor is in the best interest of the district, and therefore, we did take that action. Under the procurement code, all proposals to the RFP must remain confidential, so I can advise the board, we do have an active RFP out there, it is closed, it is in the evaluation process, and based on the procurement code and the provisions in the RFP, there's, I cannot disclose any other information. However, I can disclose the total number of submissions. We have received five offers. This demonstrates that there is substantial, you know, a significant competition and a high probability that the students will retain access. So a lot of this fear that has been put out there, that the parents will not have a solution for their students for the new school year, is false.
Mr. Mortensen, I, the way I'm trying to understand this is, you know, we, as a board, we have a duty when it comes to lobbyists or attorneys to where, what board, attorney for the board, we put a, we put a proposal out there, we get some back, and then if we are not satisfied with that lobbyist or attorney, it is the board's prerogative to not renew their contract the following year, and we've done that a few times in the past, where either the lobbyist was not involved enough, or the attorney was, you know, maybe doing not enough work for us as a board, that we did an RFP and put out for a new attorney. So I'm just seeing if that's similar to the same, the same procedure that is happening now, correct?
Member Benali, absolutely.
Okay.
We have to be prepared. We, it is in the best interest of the district, of course, to make sure that we have continuity of services that we can provide to those students who need those services. So it is absolutely within our rights under the procurement code to go out, and the board can then make that determination and decision. And I do want to clarify again, and it's in the contract, it's stated in law, the actual party to the contract is the board. The superintendent is not involved in the evaluation or the recommendation for award. In the RFP process, the committee is selected from district content experts, and they have to sign a non-disclosure and a confidentiality agreement, and they also have to declare whether or not they have a conflict of interest, and if there is a conflict of interest, then the procurement manager may remove them or find a substitute for that particular evaluation committee member. Following the evaluation process that is disclosed in all of the public-facing RFP documents, that award will be presented at a board meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So all of this is public, it is transparent, there is no hiding, and there is no influence from outside parties. It is done in a fair and equitable manner in order to ensure the best use of public funds.
It seems like pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, contractor does this, what they agreed to do, and the district does this, what we agreed to do, and if, if they're not doing what they agreed to do, then it's time to look for a new contractor. I mean, if you, for my, my small brain, you know, if you hired somebody to do work or concrete at your house, and their proficiency at concrete, or, you know, or whatever was lousy, I mean, you would have every right to find a new concrete guy. That's kind of how it works. You expect, you expect equal, equal effort, equal results for equal pay. And I think that's what we're doing, and the point about... equal results for equal pay. And I think that's what we're doing. And the point about this is that we do have a plan. Our job as a school board is to look out for the interests of our local kids. The kids that we see, like Priscilla said, the people we see at at chapter meetings and at church and at the grocery store. We have a duty, we were elected by them, we have a duty to make sure that their, you know, that their kids are being taken care of and being provided a good education. And, yeah, I mean, it seems pretty cut and dry. I apologize. Go ahead. I shouldn't editorialize on that stuff. It irritates me because it feels like we're getting jammed up. And it really is just, it's the kids. Like, the kids are getting, you know what I mean? Like, who in the world, who in their right mind would put up with their kid in high school or elementary school or middle school being in a class with 300 other kids and a teacher who's kind of there sometimes? I mean, give me a break.
Yes, President Mortensen. Again, we are all within our rights as a school district and as the board in order to be able to pursue what we need, you know, the actions that we need to take in order for the benefit of the district and the benefit of the public. It is not for the benefit of an individual contractor. The procurement code is very clear on that, as well as other statutes and regulations within New Mexico law. So just kind of, just finishing it up, that the board is ultimately the one that makes that decision on whether we move forward with a contract. A recommendation will be given to the board at this public meeting, but the board decides whether the award goes forward or whether we take a different action. And the superintendent is not party to that decision. Now, there's just one final note. Is that we did receive a letter dated May 14th where Stride claims that they're not required to comply with New Mexico statutes and regulations that govern student-teacher and teacher licensing requirements. Again, this is in direct conflict with the response that they provided to the original request for proposals that led to the award. So as Ms. Hanks had already explained, a public competitive solicitation was published in 2019, at the end of 2019. They responded to that solicitation. They provided a signed affidavit that they agreed to the terms and conditions of that procurement, and all of them inside. I looked and reviewed their submission. I could find absolutely no documents where they stated that they would not. Rather, I found multiple statements that they would follow the law as according to what New Mexico Public Education Department and the state, as well as federal law. And in fact, it is even in a clause in their own, you know, the final executed services agreement, on a definition of what that applicable law is. And it refers to the laws that are applicable to a school, a public school. So ultimately, too, in order for the school district to comply with the law, Stride needs to comply with the law. Otherwise, we are out of compliance. So that-
Did that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did that letter come, like, straight from Stride or through their attorneys?
I, that, a copy of the letter was given to be by Ms. Hanks, so I would have to defer to her to answer that question.
Oh, that's embarrassing.
So-
I have a good question.
Go ahead, Member Benali.
So if they're saying they don't need to require, be required to hold the state statute or regulations, I'm assuming they mean either the teacher-student ratio? Are they also talking about that we have to have licensed teachers with background checks, the safety of our children? Because a lot can happen online. And, you know, everything's happening online. We hear about these crazy stories of perpetrators online. If they, so they're saying if they don't have to have state statutes or regulations, they don't need to have a background check either, or they don't need to go by teacher ratio? What regulations of the New Mexico State statute and regulations are they saying they don't need to be required to be upheld?
So, Member Benali, the statement that they made was that ultimately it is the district who is responsible for compliance with those laws, and they are a program of a school district. They're not an actual school district. And that's why they were pushing off their responsibilities, saying that under the actual writing of the statutes, they're not responsible.
But they're in contact with our students. They see our students daily, weekly. I don't, I don't understand why they are not upheld with the same regulations that we have to abide by. There are, our students are there, in their presence.
Member Benali, I absolutely agree with you. And I do not wish to misrepresent anything that they stated, as far as, they haven't stated that they would, they're not required to have teachers with background checks. Rather, they were simply stating in general that there are certain requirements and regulations that we are required to do, especially with the teacher and student ratios, that they are not required based on the fact that they are a program. However, again, if I go back to the original conditions in the contract, the original conditions in the request for proposals, as well as their submission to the request for proposals, where they, in writing, committed to meeting all of those requirements, where they stated that they would follow the applicable law, that is where I find it in disagree, again, based on the procurement code, based on all of the statutes in each of these, you know, the relevant, those that also apply to public education. They are responsible under the terms of the contract and their written agreement.
I, you know, I think we just touched on some key issues, but one of the other things I'm thinking about in the back of my mind is, what about our special education students? You know, what violations are happening to them? They cannot say they don't have no special education students, nor can they say, in English learners that need the extra assistance. You know, where's the tutoring? Where is those resources that can be provided? Are they saying they are not going to abide by federal laws that require them to be, to hold special education students with additional resources, additional accommodations? You know, I mean, I'm, I know we're just talking about this area, but then, in the back of my mind, what about our special education students? You know, I mean, where's that guideline? Where's their services?
Member Benali, I also found that line of reasoning alarming because it could be, you know, taken to additional requirements that are under the contract. So it is ultimately, though, I do want to focus most, that if they do not perform according to what they agreed to perform in the written contract, then they are in breach. And not only that, but we're also seeing issues where it appears that there are some legality problems with the original contract. So New Mexico procurement law and regulation doesn't permit the district to allow a contractor to retract an offer or alter the scope of the services that they're going to perform under a competitively awarded contract after the award, after, you know, that ink hits, the signature is on that contract. They cannot retract it if it's going to be a detriment to the district. And, I mean, that's pretty much concludes my portion of the procurement section.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, sir.
Before we proceed, can we take a 10-minute recess?
I think we can. Do we have a second down there?
Second.
All right, let's vote on it real quick, just in case. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. We'll do 10 minutes. 10-minute recess.
11:04.
All right, I think we're all back. You can thank me later for the recess. Let's, I'll entertain a motion to return from recess. Okay, and a second down there?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
11:14.
All right, we're back. Thank you, everyone. Well, it looks like there's still some people maybe out in the lobby, but they'll be back soon enough. I'll go ahead and turn the time back over to you, Ms. Hanks. Thank you.
President Mortensen, you may also hear the air conditioner has kicked on. I did let staff know that it was a bit warm in the room, so the air conditioner is a little bit higher.
Thank you. We might be snuggling soon if it keeps going.
The next piece goes directly to Member Benali's questions in relationship to the requirements under personnel. And so Gallup McKinley County requires every volunteer, every staff member, anyone who can have unsupervised access to students. We actually purchased the fingerprinting machine, and so we offer that especially for our parent volunteer. So it requires all the M- Um, so it requires all the employees, um, that have contact with students to go through the New Mexico Department of Public Safety IDMIA. Now, for licensed staff, those individuals have to go through the New Mexico Public Education Department background check for licensure. And in New Mexico, um, there is a statute that requires, it's referred to as HB one twenty-eight, that requires, uh, HB one twenty-eight questions to be asked, and these are related to prior employment history investigations into anything related to child abuse, neglect, sexual misconduct, um, any sexual offenses or unethical misconduct or violation of policies. Please rest assured that our personnel office was checking all of this for any person put forward, um, for the company. Um, so, so do know that when they submit those individuals to us, the Personnel Office does their due diligence in, in, in checking to be sure that the background checks are on file. Um, Stride is responsible for having the HB one twenty-eights, um, and that was part of the data that we requested.
Can you, Ms. Hanks, can you, you just touched on HB one twenty-eight. I think that's a new term we have in, in our presentation, it looks like. Can you touch on what HB one twenty-eight is and why that's important?
President Mortensen, sure. Um, so this is actually codified in New Mexico statute. It's in statute twenty-two-ten-A five-point-two. And this was something that the state of the, the state of New Mexico enacted, um, in order to better protect our students um, from anyone who may be coming in close or unsupervised contact with students from harm.
And this even goes for online teachers have to do all this exact same stuff?
President Mortensen, yes. All the same a- as we've stated previously and as was explicit in the contract in the competitive solicitation, compliance with New Mexico statutes.
Before they can have any contact with students?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Avery, I am having some technical issues. Oh, he has fixed me. President Mortensen, members of the board. Um, so discussing personnel and looking at the student-to-teacher ratio chart, um, we actually looked to see from August of twenty-twenty-four to March of twenty-five, we received about an average of fourteen individuals over those months, um, an average per month of fourteen of staffing coming on. When we sent the letter, April first, we actually received an influx, and the number represented there is forty-two. We are checking that every single day, and that number has actually in- increased to forty-six individuals, um, with four additional in May. So with fifty individuals coming in in two months, there is likely, um, that the company could have had capacity to increase staffing all along, given what we've seen in response to the letter that was sent April first. Um, of the group, um, that was submitted in April and May, that number has grown to twenty-one, I was notified, has grown to twenty-one from the nineteen that were approved, that actually made it through the district background check and the New Mexico Public Education Department licensure background check. And of course, Stride would have on file for them the HB one twenty-eight forms. Now, I will note that Personnel did let me know that they found out through conversations with Stride staff that Stride was actually sharing our IDMIA code. So when you actually go in to do a background check with the New Mexico Department of Public Safety, each entity has a code, so that they know exactly which entity is requesting background checks. We actually found out that they were giving that number out to unknown individuals. So we don't necessarily have track of all the individuals that they gave our entity code out to.
Why would they do that? Like, they can't really use our ID code, but, or were they using our ID code?
President Mortensen, it's something that we're investigating now. Um, it was in recent communication with Stride staff that we found out that this was occurring. Um, so I'm, I'm going to have to bring more information back to the board, but they definitely should not have been doing that.
Um, Mr. Mortensen?
Ms. Hanks, so, again, just for me to understand this in my, my way, um, you're saying last year we were getting some of the teachers and, you know, were, they're giving us names, but not until all this stuff has happened, that all of a sudden we've got fifty, as Mr. Shaw said, fifty employees or applicants to try to resolve the issue of, um, lack of teachers and improve the teacher-student ratio?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, yes, that is accurate.
So what happens to our children's education previously to what they did not, they missed? I mean, our kids missed out on all these months of not having a teacher, a smaller ratio, um, for their education. So not until we started actively, you know, saying we want change or newspaper articles started coming out, that there was, okay, we, we, okay, we, we need to get on the ball here. We're going to hire fifty teachers. But out of the fifty, only twenty-one have passed the background check success- successfully.
President Mortensen, Member Benali, they would, they, they passed both background checks. So they passed the district's background check and the required state for licensure, because the state actually has a background check for licensed staff. So in this circumstance, those individuals actually passed two background checks in order to have unsupervised access to students. And I will briefly address the inquiry that you had about what are we going to do. There will be a robust remediation plan, um, that is put forward, because your concerns are our concerns too, that this company appears in its actions to have had the capacity all along to staff appropriately.
Just for context, for, for me, Ms. Hanks, when we're talking about like fifty, fifty teachers, like in, in context ballpark, like in, in our district, what do you think that's equivalent to? Like, what size of a school or what school may, like, fifty? Anybody, any idea? I mean, any of our staff? Who are we talking, Miyamura? So that's basically, again, like a Miyamura, that's like a five-A high schools worth of teachers that they had to try to hire to come into compliance.
And then there's still twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Short.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, sir, down there?
So, um, the twenty-one teachers that have passed everything, um, are those teachers being placed in our area that we serve as far as, or are they put, do we have anything showing that they're putting those fifty, those twenty-one teachers into the students in our area, or are those twenty-one teachers going to be serving other areas into you, wherever else they serve?
So President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, I'm going to answer your question in two ways. One, I have been actively following up with the Student Information Team to be sure that those teachers that have, um, been authorized to start work, um, that they are being assigned students. And so I did, I have not gotten that data yet, and we are waiting for some data from Stride. I'm going to look briefly over to my Student Information Team, um, lead. Um, we were talking about that yesterday, so additional data will come from that. The second part of that question that I heard was, how do we know these teachers who are online are not actually hosting online students from other states? And I'm going to be transparent with you, I don't. And that is a question that we have asked the company, given the information that has continued to evolve.
Thank you. What, um, Ms. Hanks, do, do we have a mechanism, or does a mechanism, mechanism exist to, you know, make sure that, like what you were saying, that there could be like this mix and match with, with teachers, you know, to try to fill this void? Are they potentially using, you know, teachers from other states that aren't licensed in our state? Is that possible, or are they just like rolling with three hundred kids per class?
President Mortensen, it is happening in our program.
Okay.
Happening in other states, I cannot report on.
Who knows? Okay.
Um, a- again, of the staff put forward, um, there would be thirty-four teachers as of the hundred-and-twentieth day on an endorsement waiver. And the reason that I bring this up, um, is that there is a mechanism for waivers of endorsement for certain courses. Um, however, the more that you have outside the content area, the reason that that mechanism exists is that you want the most proficient teacher to teach the core subject that they're assigned. And so with having thirty-four teachers, um, as of the hundred-and-twentieth day, just a brief comparison to the district, we have twelve teachers, um, on waiver. And so that's a pretty dramatic difference. And so that is one of the things that we are asking of them as well, um, is that just the recruitment efforts and the level of teachers in the class, targeting to be sure, just as the district does, we try to get the most qualified teacher possible for each of our classes, um, to ensure that equity, equity in education.
Mr. Mortensen? Uh, Ms. Hanks, if I were to come to your office and I asked you, Ms. Hanks, can I have an organizational chart of our school district? You know, you would print one up right away. Have we ever received an organizational chart from Stride? So we know how many administrators, how many teachers, how many counselors, the whole layout of their educational system?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, I cannot state that I have ever seen a document of that nature. I do know the staff that we work with and communicate with, um, for the program, um, but I can't tell you what other staff within the corporation might be involved in that. So I, I can say that I have never specifically seen that document.
And the reason why I'm saying that, um, ma'am, is because, you know, as the school district, I see us working as a team. You know, we're, we're, we have the administrators, we have counselors, we have teachers and cooks and bus drivers. I mean, there's a whole system. And I just want, I want to see that in Stride. And all the information that we have been provided from Stride has resulted in this presentation. So I don't see where, why we don't have the transparency available to us. You know, I mean, if we ask for it, there are, they are our contractors. They, they are somebody that we have a contract with to provide this kind of information to us. And it's not, these are not hard questions or data that we deserve to know. So I just, I, I wanted to know if there was an organizational chart that we, thank you.
President Mortensen, members of the board, um, so as I've presented to thus far, um, some of the issues and concerns in relation to data has been the ongoing, fully documented conversations back and forth. As I mentioned, we were actively working on a data dashboard with Stride in, uh, school year twenty-three and school year twenty-four. Unfortunately, that data dashboard never came to fruition. It never worked correctly. And so as we actively built that robust system, we actually brought in the district data analyst, and we brought in a content expert in data to help us dive deeper into all of the data that we have related to academics and various other areas. And really, what is coming out of this is exactly what you mentioned, um, the fruition of the data that you're seeing today. And we have nowhere near the capacity that a two-billion-dollar company does to, to have the data that they are sending to us. So everything that you were seeing in this presentation, they have access to that data. They, they likely had access to that data first. And so I'm not sure why anyone on Stride would be shocked or unknown about the data that is being presented. In regards to that, one of the things that we do when we go through a competitive solicitation is we actually ask for references, um, and those are provided and references are provided. But there's actually another step that procurement takes, and what they do is they look at suspension and debarment. And for those that are unfamiliar with suspension and debarment, this is essentially a place where governments, state and local, as well as federal, um, can actually report contractors who are not complying with contracts and/or are causing other issues as defined by statute. And so specifically, I'm mentioning New Mexico statute thirteen-one-one-seventy-eight, and I've actually annotated out section eight here, um, that violation from a bidder or offer contractor of contract provisions as set forth in the paragraph of a, of a character that is reasonably regarded by the state purchasing agent or cer- central purchase, purchasing office, to be so serious as to justify suspension or debarment action, including willful failure to perform in accordance with one or more contracts or a history of failure to perform of unsatisfactory performance of one or more contracts, provided that this failure or unsatisfactory performance has occurred within a reasonable time preceding the decision to impose dis- debarment, and provided further that failure to perform or unsatisfactorily performance caused by the acts beyond the control of the contractor shall not be considered to be the basis for debarment. I kind of read that out, because again, this is not something that I have seen in my interactions with other business officials throughout the state of New Mexico to be a very prevalent practice. But this is an important thing that governments have at their disposal, because what it does is it lets other people know when they go into contract with a vendor, that serious concerns have happened before. When a vendor actually responds to a competitive solicitation, whether that be a bid or an RFP, they will actually disclose whether or not they've been suspended or debarred. So this is why I bring this forward. I do know it's an action item, um, potentially on your agenda. I just kind of wanted to give you a little bit more information. It is kind of like a background check for vendors, so that other governmental entities have the information, should they so choose to seek it out, um, about prior performance.
Has that type of, that, that series of action happened? I mean, we, we talked earlier in here about, you know, some of these other like lawsuits and things like that going around in the country? I mean, is there, i- is there any other suspension and debarment actions been taken against Stride anywhere else in the country?
President Mortensen, no. In the research that we did, we did not find any other suspension or debarment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, the district has taken action in suspension and debarment on a previous contractor. Um, so it is something that the district does indeed seek, um, when contracts are willfully broken.
It's a pretty serious step.
It's very serious step. I will tell you that right now. It is a very serious step.
Okay.
Um, allegations and concerns. So I'm going to kind of summarize these, and I've actually provided the in detail. This is related to previous comments, but it actually references the specific New Mexico statutes as well as the specific GMCS board policies in relation to student-to-teacher ratios, um, not having appropriate licensure for teachers, um, and, um, the various cases that that, that that indicates. And so I'm not going to read this slide in detail. I provided this for supplementary information. Some of the conclusions is that the lack of sufficient staffing has resulted in a reduction of academic performance for students. And any part of the remediation plan is going to need to address this. We are going to need to address for those students who need additional support. Um, it's adversely affected the graduation rate. Um, we did find that some of the hotspots which were in the contract for them to provide for students, as we well know, many of our students struggle with internet connections. Um, this is a statewide issue. It is not limited to McKinley County. Um, and we know that not all service providers work in all areas. And so some of the hotspots that were issued did not work in the areas that they were issued to. So those students were not able to get the services that they need, and that will need to be addressed.
Have they ever worked? We don't know.
If the service provider did not work in that area, no.
So like students have been potentially like doing this online school, not really doing the online school because their internet didn't work for who knows how long?
And it can speak to the over seventeen-hundred students.
Yeah.
Think about that size, is actually looking at Roshi Miyamura and Gallup High School. Potentially not having access to, depending on what the concern was for the reason that the student withdrew.
You, you have any idea what the mechanism, like the reporting mechanism within Stride is for this type of a thing? As a parent, if you, your internet, that's not working, like, how do you, how do you run that up the flag to get results? I mean, that's a pretty serious, that's a pretty serious thing. I mean, how, I wonder how long these kids have not been going to school and how long Stride has known about it for?
And President Mortensen, that is data that was asked for, part of the eighteen data?
Right.
That they reported to us that was available on May first, but was never given to us.
So seventeen-hundred kids that don't have internet?
I'm not saying seventeen-hundred.
Okay, okay.
I want to be sure.
I'm sorry.
But I'm saying that we had seventeen-hundred kids exit the program. How many of those potentially exited the program because they could never get on the program?
Okay, I understand.
That's a question that we're going to answer. That's a question that we're going to answer.
And again, we've asked Stride for this information, and nothing. Okay.
Mr. Mortensen. Do we have any data on students that are all enrolled as far as keyboarding? When they turn on their laptops or to get into class and key in things, and how long they stay on?
President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, we have asked for that data. We have not received it.
Thank you. So this is, I mean, this really, like, some of these things are kind of important, because like, back to this suspension and debarment, I mean, it speaks to, what does it say, like, willful, willfully in disregarding of, of the law and these reporting requirements?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think wherever we go, one of the things that we always hear about is, how can that rural area not have electric or running water on this day and age? And they, they really don't understand that because they don't live here. We have a lot of families in the rural areas, and you know, people are shaking their head saying, we all have internet, we all have internet. No, we don't. We don't all have road, driveways and grass fields and, you know, just drive down the road or walk down the road to the grocery store. You know, we, we live in a community, in a district, in a county, that some of our families don't have electricity or running water, and even internet. You know, we've, the pandemic was really hard for us, and it really was a wake-up call for our nation, Navajo Nation, other tribes. And, you know, if, if they have this data to let us know how many of our children have fallen to this, to a lack of education in, in, from Stride. And the part that kind of really upsets me is they accepted money on behalf of these students. I don't know if that's a, that, that has to be some kind of a crime to say, okay, well, we're going to accept this money, but that student did not even get any education that year. And, you know, looking at the four thousand two hundred students that they have, I don't know what, I think he said eight thousand dollars a child to eleven thousand a child, that's millions of dollars that Stride has collected from our students. And that's upsetting. How much percentage of that is from our children not even getting the education? Again, some did, and some love it and appreciate what Stride has done for them. Thank you for being involved. Thank you for being that resource to our children. But that's not all of the children. That is not all of the children that got that accommodation, or that parent that cared about them. Thank you.
Go ahead.
President Mortensen.
Oh, I apologize. Hold on one second, Juma.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. I know of three students who were issued a Verizon hotspot, which would not work in their area. When they contacted Stride, Stride said, that's all we provide. So they contacted me, and I was able with the IT department, get them a AT&amp;T hotspot, and they were able to do their work. But Stride would not provide them with the AT&amp;T. This is all we have.
President Mortensen, finishing out the conclusion slide, just reiterating the failure to, to reach the ninety-five percent federally required standardized testing participation. And really, it, it speaks to the data, the data that you're talking about, the inconsistent data, the backdating of data, month, you know, receiving data and then having that data backdated by months, has just grown to this very difficult challenge administratively in regards to accuracy of the information that we're receiving, which is why we ask for so much very specific data, because remediation is going to need to occur for these students. So summary of allegations and concerns, Stride should have known that students were not meeting proficiency and were lagging far behind peer groups in the state. Stride should be able to provide the district with accurate enrollment, withdrawal, all the data surrounding those students. That should not be a complicated issue for them to be able to provide to the district. And the graduation rate shows, shows all of the things that we've discussed, unfortunately. And, and I fear that the FY twenty-five graduation rate will be less. I hope I'm wrong. I very much hope I'm wrong. But I fear, given all the information, that it will be. So as we've discussed, why would you have less staff? We know that's why we're all here. The education of students is why we are all here. And what our partnership that we hope to accomplish with Stride was giving another program opportunity for students who wanted an online program opportunity. Some of the issues that have resulted, however, due to the lack of staffing, include special education, which, Member Benali, you brought up previously when talking with Director Chrysler. And so when we were looking at that, we actually saw that Level Three and Four students had eleven teachers on the hundred and twentieth day over their permitted caseload for special education, another area. For the current school year, in our audit, they had forty annual IEPs that were late, and forty late IQ evaluations. Our special education department right now is continuing a deep dive into this data. We also found during testing, a student who was unable to participate in the standardized testing, they were attempting to change, because special education students are able to take alternative assessments based upon their alternative abilities. That was so severe and profound, the district has actually reached out to that parent and offered additional support, because that student is having difficulty at all being online. And so we are continuing, and I know you brought this up, Member Benali, please know that part of the remediation plan will include compensatory services to these students.
We're fixing somebody else's problem.
So again, continuing the required occupational trainings, they have not met eighty-three-point-two percent, and these are required of all of our educators to take place in. We were notified that there was a data breach in Stride. I believe this was in twenty-twenty. And there are specific requirements under state statute on the specific type of reporting that has to take place when a data breach of that size occurs, that we do not have evidence occurred. The student counselor ratio again, we've talked about that multiple times, and so I'm not going to reiterate that paragraph again. And then an almost thirty percent turnover rate in students. And, and as you can see on the slide, I've even got an open-ended question there. Data requested by the district has not been provided to Stride as of, I can tell you right now. I was hoping that I was going to have an answer to that question before I, I gave you this presentation, but we never received it, even though they had access to that secure transfer site on May first. President Mortensen, members of the board, you are empowered by the state of New Mexico by statute to give prior approval to any educational program to be initiated, continue, or to be ceased. That is within your powers as a duly-elected board. And while not all of the students that are in the program are from McKinley County, please know that we value all of these students. I have seen every member up here fight for the rights of the students of the state of New Mexico. We saw it in the Yasi Martinez case. We've seen it in our fight with Impact Aid. We've seen it in our fight for funding for construction. I have seen all of you advocate on behalf of all the students of the state of New Mexico. Also, nothing in the current contract, as stated by Director Chrysler, prohibits you from exercising your rights, powers, and duties over the expenditures of the school district that are not related to personnel. I know that this is a difficult decision, and you make difficult decisions every time we meet. So just know that I understand whatever you're, whatever the outcome is, whatever decision that you choose to make, that I know that you always stand steadfast in protection of all of our students. Lastly, I'd just like to say, can an online program continue? Yes, and I actively advocate that it should. This is a viable option for many students, not only in McKinley County, but throughout the state of New Mexico. Online, a rigorous online program with sufficient staffing and supports is absolutely an essential program that we should continue to offer. Can the program offerings change? Yes. And actually, parents gave us some feedback on that, on what additional services they would like to see provided. And we will definitely take that into consideration as we look towards any services that we provide next year. In conclusion to that, the only other slide I have left is the resource page. If any member of the board has any questions, I would be happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
All right, board members, let's, questions, discussion, before we move into the new business section of our agenda.
Ms. Hanks, Mr. Mortensen. Ms. Hanks, have we got any additional information from parents through the survey of, you know, what, how they felt about this program?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, I would say that there's been a mix of response. And just as you said, the program has, has worked, and an online program solution is definitely desired by many parents. It works for their families, it works for their students. We did hear from some individuals who had issues with the technology. We did also hear from some individuals who said that when they attempted to get support, they could not get calls back on that support. They provided us written documentation on that. But yes, there was also a request for additional services in an online program, such as an expansion in college and career readiness, and potentially expansion of courses that may not be able, they're unique courses, that typically may not be offered in a, in a brick-and-mortar public school district, just because of the uniqueness of licensure that would need to exist. So I can definitely say that there was a mix of responses. There were some that told us that they had issues with technology. We did have families reach out and say that they had asked for new computers several times and were never given new computers. So, so I will say it was a mix of responses that we received.
The other question I had was, when we first had the discussion, they were given a timeline to provide remedies or how the issue would be resolved. I don't know if any, we know, we know that. I don't know if the public knows, and I just want the transparency there. When was that deadline? And did we receive anything from Stride to help us continue to look at this program?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, our attorney received a letter yesterday that was approximately forty-ish pages, and mostly denying the allegations and requesting some additional data. But we didn't receive any data from them to counteract any of the statements that we've made. We, we didn't receive, yeah, as I mentioned, the, the thing that we were most focused on, especially when we heard in the last week of April that they had all this data that they were going to send us. I'm going to tell you, I've been on watch twenty-four hours a day, my tech staff has been on watch twenty-four hours a day, my data staff has been on, I mean, we were texting each other last night even, at midnight, because we thought, maybe they're going to give it to us by the, by the fifteenth, and it never came.
So at this point, these, this data that we have, these are indisputable facts, since nobody has disputed them or attempted to rectify any of these situations or anything like that. Is that correct?
President Mortensen, I would say that they dispute them, the company disputes them. I don't have anything to present to you in that regard with specific data to state that.
Okay. Board members, more questions? Okay, let's move into the new business section of our agenda. And some of these, Ms. Hanks, I appreciate it, you've been a, a trooper here. We're probably going to rely on you to just make sure, typically with, with our board packet, we'll have like a, a big accompanying things that, that, that explain each of these, these action items, so we may have some questions on them, if you're available. Okay. All right, board members, item three A is to ratify the actions of the administration to provide notice to Stride, K-12 of material breaches of, of the contract, and to demand a remedy. So explain this to us real quick, Ms. Hanks, exactly what this is, and that way, because there's a lot of people, I think, that are watching at home on, on YouTube or on the webpage or whatever, and so that way they understand what we're talking about.
President Mortensen, this will ratify the letter that was sent April first, and in regards to the material breaches, and to demand a remedy from the company.
Okay. Questions, board members, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to ratify the actions of the administration to provide notice to Stride Incorporated, K-12, on April first, twenty-twenty-five, of the materials breaches of the contract, and demand its cure, and to demand it cure the breaches.
Okay.
Sir, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, discussion and potential action on the continuance or termination of the contract with Stride Inc. under the terms of the contract. Let's, let's start with any discussion items.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am.
It is very bothersome to me. We asked Stride for data. We didn't get it. The, the big posters in the back, it's, it's disheartening to look at, to see the decrease in our children's education. Some may not have even gotten any the past year. And I just feel like we're fixing, now, we're going to be fixing somebody else's problem. And we gave them time to provide that data, and we cannot continue to have that downward cycle that we see back there in the red in the presentation that was provided to us. If they wanted to provide something, they could have provided it. The ratio of teachers to student is horrific, as we have seen, I mean, we get all these comments from parents, and if we don't even abide by, if they can't even abide by our state statutes, you know, we would be in trouble if a child was hurt online or something happened. And I'm not, I'm not ready to take that risk. If they're not going to abide by the state regulations, by the state statutes, and so I would like to make the motion to move to terminate the contract with Stride, K-12, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, three C, discussion and potential action to direct the administration to begin termination process under the procurement code to terminate the contract in the best interest of the students, and to be, and to be responsible stewards of public funds. Are there any questions on this, or any discussion that's needed? Basically, what we're talking about is directing the administration to move, move on terminating, begin the terminating process.
Again, Mr. Mortensen, I'm very bothered that the funding that all went to Stride to provide a quality education to our student, all, all of our students that are on the online program, not just some, it's supposed to be all. And with no accommodations for our special education teachers, our English language learners, that's, that's what I have to say about that. I don't, I don't see, the millions of dollars that Stride collected, I, I just...
It's sad.
Yes.
Yeah, it's sad and it's irritating. We, we've got to do better. We can do better. I mean, today, right now, we can do better. This is, this is the, the first step in that process. Okay.
With that being said, Mr. Mortensen, I'd like to move, to make a motion, to move to authorize our administration to begin termination process under the procurement code to terminate the contract in the best interest of the students and the responsible stewards of public funds.
Okay. Is there a second?
So moved.
All right, roll call, please. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, 3D, direct administration to cease all payments to Stride Inc. K-12 until proof of compliance with services required and delivered as required and outlined in the contract. It's pretty straightforward, we stop paying until, until they, until they can prove to us that they're in compliance. We've given them, given them a long time.
One, one question.
Yes, sir.
How much do we still owe on this year that we'd be?
Mr. Shaw, that would be approximately $5 million.
All right.
Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to move to authorize the administration to cease all payments to Stride Incorporated K-12 until proof of compliance with services required and delivered as required and outlined in the contract.
Okay, is there a second down there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, 3E, if necessary, let's talk a little bit right now, if we should direct the school's attorney to invoke arbitration provisions under the contract related to Stride Inc. K-12 to recover damages caused by material breaches of the contractor by vendor. So now we're talking about clawing back damages. How far back has this gone? We'll, we'll find that out. And that way we can, you know, that way we can, we can direct these funds towards actually educating kids.
I think that's a, a no-brainer for, for us as a board. I mean, if they did not meet their obligations for our children to make any kind of educational gain or increase education, or graduation rates, that, they should be liable for that.
Hundred percent.
They should provide the resources and everything they need to help us now to do, what did Ms. Hanks call it? Reeducate or re...
Remedial.
Remedial to do for our children again, because they didn't meet that. They didn't, they didn't meet the requirements that we, that was in our contract, so to me, that's a no-brainer.
I've always looked at these, I apologize for interrupting you, I've always looked at these, these funds, these are the widow's might, and they're, they're sacred funds that are dedicated to education, educating our kids. And we have a responsibility to watch out for that and make sure that they're being used in, in the correct way. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't think anybody in this room would, would, would accept subpar services for their money. I would assume that anybody in this room would return something to Walmart or the grocery store if they, if they got a bad piece of fruit or a bad can or whatever. And that's what we're talking about, is working with an arbitrator per the terms of the contract to potentially claw back some of these damages, quantify and claw back these damages.
Mr. Mortensen, you know, we, we've gone through lawsuits here at this district, you know, the mo, the biggest one are Yasi Martinez and Impact Aid. You know, we fought for every dollar for our children on those lawsuits that we had. And, you know, every penny counts for this district. You know, we, we, we struggle a lot with not having new schools. Some of our schools have been back in the 1970s, 19, I mean, they're old, I mean, through elementary, we're very blessed to finally get a new school, a high school. Mr. Mitchell's Tohachi, you know, every dollar counts for our children. And, you know, just, we're not, we gave ourselves extra work by being on the budget committee, to being on the audit committee as a board member, to make sure our children's funding is spent correctly. And what, if, if we don't, we're just as bad as them, not even thinking about our children or the educational value that we continue to do for our, for our students. So I, I agree with this, I think that we need to move forward on this action item, sir.
Okay, can you make a motion, please?
I motion, I'm sorry. I motion to move to authorize the school district's attorney to invoke arbitration provisions under the contract related to Stride 12, K-12 to recover damages caused by the material breaches of the contract by the vendor, sir.
Okay, is there a second down there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, if necessary, let's talk about this, if necessary to direct action of our school district, our attorney, to work with administration to file complaints to the appropriate state and federal agencies regarding Stride Inc. K-12's actions and omissions under the contract and its uses of public funds. What this comes down to is not only have our kids in our district been jammed up and taken for a ride, but there's other kids in other parts of the state and other parts of the country that are also, also getting jammed up and getting taken for a ride. And we want to make sure, make sure that that, that that doesn't happen in other places. I think that's, that's the gist of, of this action item.
Mr. Mortensen, I kind of think of this as, you know, what we see, you know, I've been on a board, different boards of education, and I see teachers go from, or principals or administrators, that go from one school district to another school district to another school district, or go into the BIE system or private entity. And there's a reason why they keep moving around, because people get, see, maybe they're valued, they got the degrees, they got the experience, but then something's wrong there, and then they, they get fired, they let go, and they just go into another system. There's nothing holding these people accountable because their services are not up to par. Their educational level's not up to par, but we're just continuing to recycle these individuals. And I don't want this to continue to fall upon other students that, what we, what our students went through. You know, I mean, they were, again, they were given the opportunity to provide their side, but we didn't receive anything, so...
I agree with Ms. Benali. People have to know and be, you know, directed to the state and federal agencies so they know what is going on with Stride.
Okay, you have a motion?
With that said, I'll go ahead and do a motion to move forward to direct our school district attorney to work with our administration to file complaints to the appropriate state and federal agencies regarding Stride Incorporated 12K actions and omissions under the contract and its use of public funds.
Thank you, is there a second? Second, go ahead, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Now, this certainly doesn't, I mean, these actions that we've taken so far, I mean, this doesn't mean that parents can't choose Stride if they want to. It's an online course, and so anybody can log in, anybody can go to school at Stride if they want to, that's fine. I mean, we're not taking anybody's ability to go to school or take their kids to Stride, you might be satisfied, and I'm really happy for you. I, I hope that you continue to be happy, and I hope that, you know, I wish you luck. But we are parting ways with Stride and moving in a new direction, and you're welcome to stay with them. So that's all we're, that's all we're talking about. I'm glad you, yeah, no, I appreciate that, we appreciate the applause. We're moving in a good, in a good direction in our school district, and I wish you luck. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
G. Are you on to the next one?
Yeah, we're on to G.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Let's move on to, let's move on to the next item, please. We can, I'll move to take recess.
Motion to recess.
Okay. Second down there?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, ma'am.
On the next action item, I would like to delegate you as our board president to authorize a press release regarding the actions taken by the board in this meeting, and to speak on behalf of the board to the media if they have any questions, and to keep the public and staff aware of school district's effort to provide virtual instructions for the next school year, sir.
All right.
Second.
Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. These are the first steps to provide a landing spots for, for parents and students and staff who love the ability to work and learn online, and we support you and feel the heavy responsibility to make your needs, make sure your needs are being met. It's also the first step to provide a takeoff point to the many, many students and parents and staff who have been ignored, who feel disenfranchised, and are not getting their money's worth. We're here for you, and we have a plan to move forward. I will entertain a motion to adjourn for the day.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
1215.